All right, good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, October 8th, 2019 regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting. Call the meeting to order at 7:00 o'clock, and if you could call the roll, please.
Mr. Kaczynski.
Here.
Mrs. Stufan?
Here.
Mrs. Troutman?
Here.
Mrs. Hostler?
Here.
Mr. Collins?
Still here.
Dr. Harrell?
Here.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Here.
All board members are present, and if we could stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have two recognitions tonight for the Shining Star Award, so Chris, do you want to do yours first?
Great, thank you. So our first Shining Star recipient this evening is Shelley Rozuski, a first grade teacher at Lincoln School who was nominated by Jen Barnaby. The following-
Wait, is she, are you here?
Yep.
Yeah.
Oh.
I was very anxious.
I had help with that, but yes, please. So the following is an excerpt from a letter that was sent to Dr. Moyer and Mrs. Barnaby from a parent of two first grade students at Lincoln School. My boys Matt and Jack started first grade at Lincoln last week. Although our boys were at Lincoln for kindergarten, Jack became extremely, extremely anxious that morning. We all want our kids to love school and to love learning, but seeing your child struggle can be heartbreaking. When Jack started to cry that morning and not want to go to school, my heart immediately dropped. Everyone was nice, but eventually Jack needed to be taken from me crying. I walked home that morning feeling terrible. Less than an hour after I dropped him off, I received an email from Shelley Rozuski, along with a picture of Jack smiling and enjoying school. I can't even begin to imagine how busy Shelley must have been with her new first grade class, yet somehow she found the time to send the email and picture to me and reassure me. This letter goes to show that Shelley Rozuski is truly a shining star, going above and beyond the call of duty to help a family transition into a new school year. I know all of us, I'm sure, can remember teachers that touched our lives in various ways, and thank you for doing that for our kids. Appreciate it. Congratulations.
I have the honor of reading the nomination for Cory Fagan, a first grade teacher at Cory was nominated by Robbie Larson. Anyone who's sent a child off on their own, whether in kindergarten, first grade, or college, knows that the first day of school brings with it a wave of emotions, including excitement and nervousness for parents, students, and teachers alike. Mrs. Cory Fagan, besides sending her own daughter off to kindergarten this year, ushered in a new class of first graders. After a day filled with getting-to-know-you activities and encouraging these first, new first graders to persevere through what was new for them in terms of a whole day rather than a half-day of school, Mrs. Fagan stayed after school to call each and every parent in her class to introduce herself and to check in to see how their child enjoyed the day. Mrs. Fagan did something even more incredible and personal, and told each parent a story of how their child responded to their first day of school. Again, anyone who's experienced the wave of emotions for the first day of school knows how exhausting such a high-energy day can be. Mrs. Fagan's thoughtful gesture to touch base with all parents certainly goes above and beyond the call of duty. Mrs. Fagan is exemplary example of what it means to be a shining star. And me personally, having known Cory for many years, know that she steps up in projects big and small and always gives 110 percent. And for that, even though my child, kids have never had you as a teacher, I'm-
I have children, so-
You do, yeah. I'm honored to present you with the Shining Star Award.
All right, next, the public comments. The Board will receive public comments for up to three minutes concerning items on this agenda, as well as communication, petitions, reports from citizens or representatives of other public agencies. I have no one signed up for public comment. Is there anyone else who would like to do public comment? All right, then we will move on in the agenda to reports and presentations. We have a big presentation tonight, Key Performance Indicators, School Report Card Information, and School Improvement Report, and given by Marian Limkey, Nikki Tamaru, Scott Grins, and Shaleen, is that Shaleen Delacary? And just, you know, kind of, I know we have a couple people watching the Board, observing the Board meeting. This Board meeting, we, you know, it's a study session, we call it, where we're working and learning and digging into whether it's data or topics, and, you know, tonight we won't vote on anything, but we study things in preparation for votes at other meetings. So with that, I'll turn it over to Marian.
Great, thank you. So I'm here to kick off this presentation, and we'll tag team, and I'll then hand off to my colleagues to talk about some of the implications of some of the data that we're going to look at today. So as you all very well know, our district's vision is that our students will leave us college, career, and life-ready, and we've defined that to mean that they'll be demonstrating these six C skills as measured directly through some of our standards-based grading practices that are now sort of really getting off the ground, as well as through some of the more performance on more traditional measures of achievement and growth. So this presentation really fits into this piece around measurement of our district vision. So I'm going to be going over the performance, key performance indicators, or KPIs, then I'll talk a little bit about the state accountability system, and then I'll turn it over to my colleagues. So this is a set of KPIs that are currently written into our district's operational plan. I'm going to start out talking about indicators related to our older students, including some of our students who have graduated from the district and moved on to bigger and better things, and then we'll move on to talk about indicators for our elementary and middle school students. Throughout the way, we're going to be talking about achievement as well as growth, so that we can look at the extent to which our students are progressing while we have them, as well as where they're landing in terms of achievement. So the first thing I'm going to talk about, and maybe one of the best indicators that I can think of that gives us some information on whether or not our students are becoming college, career, and life-ready is just the number that are actually going on to college. So if colleges are accepting our students and they're enrolling in college, then that seems a pretty sort of ultimate test of college readiness in some ways. So what this chart tells us is that about 84 percent of our students from the class of 2018 enrolled in college, either a two- or four-year institution, within their first year after graduation. So the data lag a bit, this data are coming, these data are coming to us from the National Student Clearing House, and so there's a little bit of a lag in us getting those data. The national average for low-poverty schools is 79 percent, so we are above that, that national average. This one, I remembered to put the line for the national average, this one I didn't, so sorry about that. So this slide speaks to students' persistence and actual completion of college. So again, so one of the, one indicator that we can look at on the extent to which we're preparing our students is whether they're actually going out into the world and being successful in completing college. So what we see is that about 66 percent of our students graduate in six years or less, which is sort of the metric that is traditionally reported for college completion, compared to about a rate of 53 percent nationally for low-poverty schools. So the vast majority of our students are actually going on to college, and most of them are completing. It's a little bit hard for us to know, obviously, once students leave us, the extent to which readiness is a factor in their completion, or if there are other things that come into play, but I do think these are valuable information for us to at least take a look One of the things I should have said before I started jumping into all of the data are there are a lot of slides and there's a lot of data, so I think it, one thing I'd ask you to sort of keep in mind as we're going through all of these data points is just the extent to which you're seeing evidence about overall whether or not our students are becoming college, career, and to the extent that we can measure it, life-ready. So sort of think about how you can triangulate and put all this information together and get a sense of really where we, where we are as a district. So we've looked at college enrollment and college completion. Another way we can look at where we are is looking at our SAT scores. So this tells us something about how well our students are doing. We do see some small decreases in the subject level scores for the evidence-based reading and writing, that's at EBRW, and the math section average from last year to this year. Our averages are, depending on the subject, 35 to 40 points above the national averages still, and more than that above the state average. We don't yet have data for comparison districts because those data become public when school report cards are out, which is something I'll talk a little bit about later in the This slide takes the SAT scores and just shows you the distribution of performance, and the reason I show this slide is just because I think it indicates something about sort of how our student performance is segmented, perhaps in some ways. So students in, on the leftmost side of this graph with the, with the one, are performing between the first and 10th percentile nationally speaking, and the students in the rightmost bar, that 25 percent of students are over the 90th percentile. So you'll see that it's not a very even distribution. Over 9 percent of our students have scores over 1,400, so that's, sorry, that should be 49 percent, which are the, if you sort of combine those last two bars. So that's, it's a little bit different than what you see nationally speaking also, so we're above the national average there as well. College Board actually also provides a means to use SAT scores directly to look at college readiness, so they've done some linking studies where they follow kids into college, and they look at the scores that students obtain to see whether or not, what kind of score gives you sort of at least a 75 percent chance of earning a passing grade in a college course in literacy or mathematics. So they set benchmarks that show for 12th graders, a certain cut point that they have to achieve in order to be on track for what they consider to be college readiness. So you'll see, for us, we have about 80 percent of our students meeting this benchmark for the evidence-based reading and writing measure, a little bit less for math. If you look at students who meet both of those benchmarks, our number is 66 percent, which means that 66 percent of our 11th graders, so remember, these are 11th graders taking this test, the benchmarks are actually set for 12th graders, who are, at least according to the College Board's definition, on track to be successful in college. And later on, we'll be looking at some AP data, so we'll see that actually that our students are already passing college-level courses at fairly high rates. So the state of Illinois actually sets its own performance levels to determine student proficiency, which, and their cut points are actually higher than what the College Board sets, and so using those standards, you will see if you combine those two top levels there, the green and the blue parts of the bars, that a smaller percentage of students are demonstrating proficiency. So we're at about 63 percent for math and 68 percent for the evidence-based reading and writing overall. The reason I show these and the reason they're relevant is because these play into our state accountability designations, which again, I'll talk a little bit about later. So this slide starts breaking down our SAT averages into subgroups by subject. ELL on this slide refers to our English language learners. IEP refers to our students with special needs, and FRL refers to our lower-income students. So what you see here are some pretty significant gaps between students in these subgroups compared to their peers. So for example, there's about 130-point difference between students with and without IEPs and students who are low-income and those who are not considered low-income. And in fact, one of the bigger changes that we see in our average scores this year is within that low-income group. We see some decreases there. The last thing I was mentioning? So one of the changes, so if, the patterns persist over time, so we see these same patterns last year, but we do see that the gap actually widened for our low-income students this year as compared just to last year. This slide shows similar information but broken down by race and ethnicity subgroups, so here we also see gaps between white and Asian students and Hispanic and black students. All the group averages are down a little bit from last year. Just want to pause for a minute. It might feel like I already threw a lot of numbers and a lot of slides at you, but don't worry, I have many more. But I've actually only shown you two kinds of data so far. So we've looked at college enrollment and college completion, and we've only looked at SAT scores. So so far, what that information, at least what it's telling me, is that most of our students are moving on to college, most of them are completing college, but that really, that isn't the case for all of our students. So one of the other KPIs that we have, and another way you can think about how well we're preparing students for college careers in life, but especially for college, is to look at the types of experiences that we're providing for them in high school. So it's certainly easier to be successful in college if you've had some opportunity to experience the kinds of work that you might encounter once you get there. So that includes for us, we have AP courses, we have ACP courses, we have other types of, post-secondary types of experiences that students can have while they're at, while they're in high school. What you will see here is that the numbers overall have been increasing a little bit over time, so we are offering those opportunities for students to experience post-secondary types of courses while they're in high school, and in fact, you'll notice that the 84 percent number is fairly similar to the number that are actually enrolling in college. So this slide and the next couple of slides focus particularly on AP, although it might actually be worth considering whether that is the place we really want to focus, given that we do offer a number of different types of post-secondary options, but for the purposes of the KPIs that we currently have written into our operational plan, we do have a focus on, on AP.
Marian, the slide I saw not too long ago had 15, 16 numbers in there, and that number was, I believe, over 42 percent?
Are you talking about this particular slide on AP participation?
Yeah, or is there a different one? I'm talking about this one.
I mean, I probably, I think the slides always had three years of data, and so I might have removed an earlier year. I don't know if that's what you're remembering.
Well, I am. The reason I want to point that out is because that, that's an important drop in our AP participation that coincides with about the same time that we started to accelerate the offerings for AP courses. So that, that's, or ACP courses, excuse me. And so you see that our post-second, even though the AP number is down since the last time we got one of those AP honor roll designations or whatever, that coincides with the fact that we've offered a more eclectic mix of different post-secondary opportunities in high school.
Yeah, the, so the 2017-18 year is actually sort of a blip up in terms of participation from last year to this year. The change from last year to this year is mostly explained by a couple of courses. So we had many more students last year, two years ago now, in 2017-18 enrolling in calculus, in the calculus AP courses. This year, some students are in the ACP version of those courses. We also had students who may have otherwise participated in AP language enrolling in our interdisciplinary honors American Studies course. So there's a couple of courses that had fairly big drops in enrollment from last year, just from last year to this year. This slide has somewhat similar information. The only thing that it tells you that's a little bit different than what you're looking at before is you'll see that the blue bars are the numbers of students and the gray bars are the numbers of tests. So obviously, there are more tests than students, telling you that we have students taking multiple AP tests. So this slide is looking at AP passing rates over time. So our AP pass rate overall is about 85 percent. That's down a little bit from last year. It might be a reflection of more open enrollment in AP courses, it might be different students taking those courses. It is worth noting that our pass rates are pretty far above the national averages for, I think, every course, maybe except one that we offer. So again, I think it is worth remembering that what this is telling us is that many of our students are already demonstrating college readiness, they're passing courses that they can actually get college credit for. Nearly all of our students graduate, and that really hasn't changed much over time. Here again, it isn't on the slide, but we do see some differences here by subgroup. So so far, all of the data I have shown you is about achievement, our performance kind of at one, at one point in time. So one other thing we might ask ourselves is about growth, how well students are progressing while we have them in high school. So we know that we're giving them those opportunities to take college-level courses, we know that the kids who take them are largely being successful, we know what their performance on one test looks like. So as the state has continued to move in the direction of the PSAT and SAT suite of assessments, that gives us an opportunity to be able to track performance over time, and the state to begin to track our students' performance over time. So I'm just going to kind of summarize the following slides a little bit before we get too lost in the details. So what College Board has done is they've actually published norms that allow us to look at our students' growth compared to similar peers. Because the patterns of test-taking have changed over time, so we've, we've moved from mostly administering tests in the fall to mostly administering tests in the spring, we don't have norms for every single set of cohort of kids, because some kids may have tested in the fall, then they went in the, you know, the spring of the following school year, and so on and so forth. So we do have some information that we can look at in terms of growth and normative growth. So we have two sets of students, those moving from 10th to 11th grade, and then 11th graders moving from fall testing into SAT testing in the spring. So what you're going to see on both of these slides, this is the 10th to 11th grade, this is the 11th grade, within 11th grade, from fall to spring, and so what we see in both cases is that students are performing, they're growing on pace with their peers. So the green, the green tells you they're, they're on pace. So for example, in this particular instance, our students grew from a score of 525 on average for the EBRW section in 10th grade to a score of 556 on average. College Board says, we should have expected if you started at a 525 to end up at a 555. We ended up at a 556, so there we are, we're, we're on track with what we ought to expect in terms of growth. And you see a similar pattern here for our 11th graders. One of the KPIs that remains on our list is also to look specifically at growth for our English language learners. That's been one of our KPIs since I got here to the district. So we've looked at academic growth. What this growth is about is about growth towards proficiency in English as measured by the state, the state's English language proficiency assessment. So the state says that students should become proficient in English within five years. Last year, we had, I think it was 58 students meet that benchmark, 84 percent of them within the state's designated timeline. And so what the state is doing now is they are tracking, so when a student is identified as an English language learner, we know where they're starting, and then we know in five years where they ought to be in order to be proficient, and so the state, the state sets targets every year for students, and then we, so we can track whether or not they are making sufficient progress in order to become proficient within that timeline. So some students hit it exactly, some students get part of the way there, and some students miss the target entirely. And so what I'm giving you here is just the percentage of students who either partly or all the way hit their yearly target towards English language proficiency at the high So before I move on, I'm just going to sort of pause and recap and think about that question that I asked you to keep in your mind. So what evidence are we seeing that our students are becoming college, career, and life-ready? So we know they're growing, sort of as they should be. We know that many of them are achieving at high levels, including taking and passing college-level courses. Most of them are graduating and going on to college, and most of them are completing. So all these are pretty consistent over time, and I think the thing is that that isn't necessarily true for all of our students. And now I'm going to move on to elementary and middle school. So one of the KPIs that we have for elementary school relates to reading on grade level by third grade, because there's a fair amount of research that shows that students who aren't reading on grade level by third grade tend to have both poor academic and other types of outcomes. And so as with the high school data we were just looking at, most of our students are on track by this measure, so 79 percent are meeting or exceeding based on our internal Fuentes and Pennell literacy testing. And we see a little bit of a bump up from last year in that number, and a little bit of bump down if you look at the below-level percentages of students. But when we look at our Illinois Assessment of Readiness data, and this is the state's assessment in reading and mathematics for students in grades three through eight, the test formerly known as PARC, we see a much smaller percentage of students who are meeting grade-level standards, at least as defined by the state. So in this instance, it's just over, it's just over half students, and we haven't seen much change in that over time. So I think one question for us to consider is, is what's different about what this test measures than what we're seeing on something like Fuentes and Pennell, and how are the performance levels different? So how does that play into what we're seeing here? So as we saw with SAT, we do have some gaps in the percentages of students meeting standards by subgroup. So for instance, here we are seeing that 21 percent of low-income students meet standards in ELA compared to 57 percent of non-low-income students. We see similar kinds of patterns for ways where many fewer black and Hispanic students meet standards than are white and Asian students. So these data give us a little bit of a mixed picture of achievement, and so something for us to think about is where we're seeing inconsistencies, what might be the, you know, sort of the root causes of those differences. We do also want to ask ourselves, for those students at the elementary and middle school, how well are students progressing during the time that we have them in elementary and middle school? So I'm going to summarize, I'm not going to give you the full explanation on the statistical model that the state uses to measure growth, but I'm just going to tell you that the state looks at performance of individual students from year to year on the IAR or PARC, looking backwards, compared to similar students, and it assigns every student a growth percentile from 1 to 99. 1 is obviously very low growth, 99 is very high growth, 50 is average growth. So what we do then is we just aggregate that information across students to look at overall performance by subject and grade level. So for example, what you see here, if you look at the bar all the way to the right, you'll see the number 49 for eighth grade for ELA growth. So what that is telling you is that, in essence, our eighth graders in ELA from 2018 to 2019 showed average growth. Because of some, you know- Because of some, you know, statistical and other kinds of measurement error in the way that, that these numbers are calculated, basically, what I look for is numbers that are pretty far different from 50. So if you're somewhere around 40 or you're somewhere around 60, that to me is something worth, worth paying attention to. We do see some better-than-average growth for math. You'll see one grade level here for 2019 is, is at a 62, which means they are above average here for growth. So that means between sixth and seventh grade, those students showed better-than-average growth compared to their peers. In general, though, you'll notice most of the numbers are kind of in the neighborhood of 50. So our, our students are pretty well, on average, growing about, at about the same rate as their peers. I'm going to skip this and come back to that one. The other piece of growth, similar to what we looked at for the high school, is how many of our students are showing progress towards becoming proficient in English in the same way that I described it for our high schools. So we see that 86% of our elementary students are either fully or partially sort of making those year-to-year gains that we would like to see from them. A little bit smaller percentage at the middle school. I'm going to go back for a minute. One of the things that we had talked about last year and that I think we may want to keep looking at. So we had talked about changing the way we were looking at ELL growth. Last year, all we looked at for EL growth was just the, the raw amount of change that we saw from students. And now we have a better way to look at whether or not they're on track to proficiency, which I think is a better measure. We also talked about trying to look at some of the standards-based grading data that we now have for one whole set of students from last year to really look directly at the extent to which we're able to measure things, like those 60s that we say that, that are, you know, really the things that we care about, collaboration, communication, critical thinking, those types of things. So what I did was gather up some of the data that we have from our students' report cards from last year. So we do have a process standard that relates to collaboration. And so you'll see here that 89% of our students were rated by their teachers based on the evidence that they collect throughout the year to be consistently meeting that standard. We also have some standards in ELA, for example, that touch directly on communication skills, writing, speaking, and so on. You'll see that if you sort of average those together, which is what I did here, I just did this for two sort of benchmark grades, third and fifth graders. You'll see that about 72% of our students were proficient on, on those standards. We also identified some standards that kind of hit directly on critical thinking skills, comparing, contrasting, things like that, and averaged those together to sort of take a, again, sort of a direct look at those 60 skills that, that we think are important. So I think it's a great addition to be able to at least begin to look at how we measure some of these skills directly and have some information that we can kind of explore and refine and probably try to track in a more consistent and maybe coherent manner way going forward. But it's, it's a beginning point, I think. Before I go on to state accountability and report cards, again, I just want to sort of pause and ask us to think about, okay, what are we seeing in all of the information that I just threw at you? So what is IAR telling us? What are we seeing in FNP? What are we seeing in standards-based grading data and EL growth data that we just talked about? Again, I mean, similar to what we saw for the high school. I mean, I think we, we see that students are making progress. We see that some students are being successful, not all of them. And so those are some of the kinds of things that we need to continue to think about. All right, so I'm going to move on to state accountability. What we just looked at are all of our sort of internal KPIs. Of course, the, the state has its own accountability system, which uses actually some of the same types of data. And so I wanted to give you some updates on that system as well so that you're familiar with it. So the state uses a variety of data to assign every school in the entire state to one of four categories that you see here. Schools that fall into the lower two categories are subject to additional oversight and, and school improvement planning for the state. Schools in the highest category actually can apply to be partners and support other schools who may be in those less desirable categories. One of the things that you may notice if you read the descriptions of these designations is that it, it is a relativistic system. So they look at our data. They look at every piece of data for every, not only all student group, but every single subgroup for every single school in the state. And they line it all up, and then they draw some lines. And, and that ultimately is where we come up with these designations. The data that the state uses are shown here. It might be a little bit hard to read, sorry about that. At the high school level, you'll see that about half the pie there is graduation rates. So that's a big chunk of, of what we are held accountable for, as well as proficiency. Currently, as measured by the SAT only, they will be adding in PSAT as soon as they have some performance levels set for those. And there are some other measures, chronic absenteeism, participation in the five essentials, and growth, as you saw for our EL students. At the elementary and middle school levels, the vast majority of the, of the data that's looked at are from IAR. So it's all growth and proficiency are the biggest chunks of, of what's included there. There are a couple of changes in how the state is computing accountability this year that it might be worth you being familiar with. So a couple of things. First, science proficiency is now included. Traditionally, it had only included math and ELA. We now have science included as well. The subgroup that used to be made up of students with IEPs has been expanded to also include students with 504s as well. Students are now tied to their home school rather than their serving school, meaning it doesn't matter where the students are actually receiving their educational services. They're tied back to whatever their home school might be. So it's a little bit different. And this year was the first year we had the five essentials, climate survey information, just participation rates included in our, in our calculations. So the timeline really is, we have some data now that we can preview. That's all embargoed until the end of the month. At the end of the month, school report cards become public, as well as all the designations that are part of them. And we will need to make those available to our stakeholders as well. And typically, we provide them links on our website to all of the information that's also on the, the state's website. And that's all I have.
So can we ask some questions of you before we get into?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Who's up? Chris, I know you got some.
Sure. So I guess I'll start with, with comments first and then questions. I mean, I'm a bit concerned, was my reaction to the results, mainly because they're flat and flat over multiple years. And I know that we're trying to achieve student growth, but, you know, I don't think over time, flat is going to be good enough in, in this community. So my overall reaction is in impatience for change and seeing a positive inflection in student outcomes because I think that's what's best for the kids. And so I hope that that sense of urgency is shared by folks that are trying to, to strive for that because in, in some of these, I mean, in many instances, the, the results were actually taking a moderate step back, which is kind of the opposite of how we want to be trending. So I hope that we're challenging the programs and the assumptions we're making and making sure that we're taking an honest look at that. Because I think over time, continuing to be flat isn't what we should be targeting. So, and, and there were some comments there about relative to national average and, and stuff like that. And I think that that's, it's fine to look at that. I don't think our community would expect our schools to be anywhere close to a national average. So I think more comparing our district versus peers would be more appropriate. And I think most appropriate would be relative to our own history and rate of growth, which hopefully we can start to turn around. So I wanted to reiterate just a prior request when the school report cards do become available, that we expand our comp set to include other communities with similar property valuations, not just DuPage County and not just unit districts, but, you know, communities that we compete with for capital investment and population growth and things like that. So hopefully, when that comes out, we can, we can look at it that way. So my main question, you know, my understanding is that we've had plans in place to achieve growth in outcomes in all prior years. And either those were unsuccessful or it hasn't come through yet. And so I'd like to understand what the diagnosis was of what went wrong there and how are we adjusting these new plans to try to get a different outcome? Thank you.
So I, I think some of the comments that my colleagues were going to make are going to start to address some of those things. I don't know, unless there are any data questions, I'll get, Margaret, go ahead.
So there, there are a couple of things, just clarification.
Sure.
Point. One, and Chris hit on this, that the indicator that you use, can you, not the indicator, the benchmark that you use, can you explain what that benchmark is? And specifically, I wrote, I wrote down low-poverty schools. So is that only low poverty?
Yes.
Is that all schools? Okay. So is there?
So this, in the first slide that I was showing you around college enrollment and completion, I took the number that the Student Clearinghouse provides for low-poverty schools because we certainly fall into that category. I think that's our best comparison. So they break down the data that they have into groups so that high schools can take a look at who would be a good comparison for them. Because it would not be a good comparison for us to look at the overall national average. I completely agree with that. So we're looking at the national average for low-poverty schools.
So low as in small, as in not?
Small percentages of students who are low-income.
Okay. That, that's an important, that's an important distinction. So a, a low number, okay.
Yep.
Another data question I have is you showed a couple of slides. One was the SAT and the distribution of how we performed on the SAT.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so that number right there, one, that, or the students that are between 0 and 10%, there's 7% of students there. And I am contrasting that with 95% of our students graduate. So we've got 5% that don't graduate. And our, our SAT distribution, is that, so I'm not sure what that's saying about our SAT score or our graduation. So I'm trying to get some better clarity around that. And I don't know if that, that can be answered, but that's just one thing that I want to do the comparison on. And then the other point that I wanted to do comparison on was our ELL growth, our yearly track target. And when I was listening to, it seemed like, the numbers. High school, we had 86% meeting the yearly target. Middle school, we dropped to, sorry, 60, 60%. And then high school, we bumped back up. So there is a question there on, you know, what's changing, what's happening to make that significant difference? And one more data-related type note was our difference in our growth rates. So when I looked at our, and I'm taking the difference in the math growth rate versus the ELA growth rate. And the ELA growth rate appeared to be, appeared to be consistent. So it was pretty much 50, so it was like 53, 50, 52, 50, 49 from, was it fifth grade through eighth? But our math growth rate, growth rate increased. It went from, yes, 48, 49, 55, all the way up to 62 in the seventh grade, back down to 56. So I'm, I'm just trying to understand, and again, don't know if this is test scores, testing, but trying to understand some of those variations and some of those differences.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know that I can tell you why the numbers are what they are. I think what you're, the pattern that you're commenting on is there. So these numbers look pretty steady across grades. These numbers vary more by grade. And that may be a function of the ways in which, you know, math is different than reading, which is probably more difficult to sort of have a big impact on if the skills are kind of consistent over time as opposed to math where you may hit a year where there's a lot of content that you're really great at and not so great at, depending on the cohorts and what are, how our curriculum maps and so on. I, I don't know. Those are some, those are some thoughts.
I apologize, I have one more data question.
Sure.
When you were talking about the different gaps, and there were a different, a variety of different groups that you pulled up, IEP, EEL, free and reduced lunch, the gaps on race. The data question I have behind that is, is there, are there different, are those categories, groups distinct? Are there overlapped? Are some people, the same people in, in multiple groups? Or how can, do you know how that's broken out?
They overlap. There certainly are students who fall into more than one of those categories.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. All right. So I, I'm trying to understand, like, what's that unique, what's that, any number, any gap is too high, okay, first, foremost. But I'm trying to understand what's that total, that absolute number, to try to get a better understanding in of, of, of what we're talking about. Because otherwise, those numbers are, this is a, a judgment statement. Those numbers are, they make me very sad. They make me very sad. So trying to get an understanding of what that absolute number is. Thank you.
Sure. I'm going to let my colleagues talk about some of the things they're thinking about to address some of those data questions.
Hey, hang on. Do you, somebody else have a data question before she, Jim?
I have a, I guess a couple of requests.
Okay.
As far as data goes. You showed the percentage of kids for the last three or four years taking at least one AP course.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a slide that will show kids that are taking at least one college experience course?
So I think this is, whoops, what you're after.
Okay.
That's the four options?
Yep, that includes all of these types of courses. Yep.
Thank you. Can you go back to that slide for a second?
Sure.
So that is growing ever so slightly.
Yes.
Okay. What, what concern, I am not concerned the slightest because we have all these other options about, I'm not concerned in the slightest about declining AP enrollment. I am concerned about declining AP pass rates. For several years ago, we were able to not only have, in, before we had all these other college alternative experiences, we have all those AP honor roll posters on the, on the wall. We were able to not only have increasing AP enrollment, but we had increasing AP pass rates, which, which is a pretty good, pretty good thing to have happening, which is why we had all those AP honor rolls. So I'm concerned about the declining AP pass rates with the declining enrollment. There, am I correct that there is no way to know are the highest-performing kids taking the alternate experiences? Is there any way to know that, to break out that data? Does that explain our declining pass rates?
We could try to look at, you know, average SAT scores of kids in different types of classes or something. I'm not sure how far we would get with that. So I don't, I don't know the answer to that. I mean, I can, I can tell you that there are, in general, our pass rates are very similar to last year. There are, it, the changes are driven by just a few courses. And those are data that we've talked over with folks to sort of say, hey, you know, you should maybe take a look.
Okay. Yeah, if, if we get any more analysis on that, that would be interesting.
I mean, one of, so as an example, one of the courses that we do see And one of, so as an example, one of the courses that we do see decline is AP Environmental Science. Our high school colleagues tell us that they see other, they see some of our higher performing students taking other elective courses in science and that there are other students who might not necessarily otherwise consider taking an AP science course going into that course. That's anecdotal information. I can't, can say, like, I've looked at the data and that's, you know, the average SAT scores for kids look really different this year than they did last year, but, you know, that's some anecdotal information that, that I have.
Yeah, okay. More globally, speaking of longitudinal data, I mean, I realize that in all this, there's a little bit of a random walk depending upon the composition of any particular class.
Yeah.
Right? It's, it's not such a huge sample size that it should be absolutely consistent.
Correct. And, and we had actually a fairly large change in the size of the class from last year to this year.
Yeah. So is there any, do you have any access to longer streams of longitudinal data that, rather than just three years? I think three years kind of exaggerates any, any volatility.
Probably in some cases we do, and in other cases we don't, is the answer.
Okay. I would be very interested in seeing long-term trends. And then to expand upon Chris's point about, after October 30th, I'd love to see you back in November to talk about our relative performance. I don't know if you want to do an EAV valuation, but maybe Chris and I can duke this out in the hallway.
You can tell me, and I'm sure we can crunch some, some numbers.
But, you know, I'd, I'd be curious of our performance versus, versus the top five or 10 performing high schools in the state that take all comers. I'm not interested in the Proviso Math and Science Academy, or the Illinois Math and Science Academy, or any of the Chicago Magnet schools. I'm just, schools without an entrance exam is what I'm interested. So I think, why not benchmark yourself against the very best?
Sure.
So I guess that's kind of the end of my data questions, though.
Okay.
Others I think are more relevant to your colleagues here.
Sounds good.
I just want to ask for one piece of data while you're talking about AP. I would like to see the breakdown of what the scores are, and I don't know when we ever get this, but for all the AP classes, what are, you know, how many fives, how many fours, how many threes, based on how many people are taking it? Because, you know, how much, if it counts at a school, matters what number you get. And I think looking at some of that data, you know, is important to see, too. If you're seeing a test where people tend to get a lot of threes, you know, what is that telling us about instruction and what we need to look at? So if you could somehow bring that back to us at some point, that'd be great. And Jim, just, you know, you talked about ACP and AP. For example, last year, the senior math class, really the only opportunity for those kids was an ACP Calc III versus an AP. So that put all those kids in that ACP. So I think some of those conversations about, you know, there weren't really other options if they'd kind of been on that track.
So for the, for the Calc BC kids for junior year, the only thing to take senior year was?
ACP Calc III.
Was ACP Calc III. What about, I'm trying to remember the name of this class, that, that is also an ACP class. There's another math class.
There's a Calc II and a Calc III course, to my understanding.
There's also a...
There's a finite.
Finite math, thank you. There's also a finite math course as well. But they, but you're right, they're all ACP options. I mean, I don't know what that says.
Neither, but it might be, when you bring back that AP, maybe give us also, what are the ACP classes and what are the AP classes? So you kind of see, are we, are we, you know, balanced? Are we heavy on one? Or, and then I think that's a discussion for us to have in what we want to offer or what the tribe's.
Is there an ACP, ACP equivalent to Calc AB? AP Calc AB? It's a lot of, it's a lot of letters, isn't it?
I don't, I don't know enough calculus to tell you. I'm not sure.
I'll, I'll wait for your colleagues to stump them with that one.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary Ann.
For data?
She can't, she can't leave yet.
I have to do this to Kara because I just, I enjoy it. Do ACP classes count by third parties towards, my understanding is that they're excluded. When they look at your overall participation of students in like an AP class, they don't include ACP courses in that calculation, correct?
For, you mean for AP? The College Board certainly doesn't care about any courses that are not theirs.
Like, third parties that rank our district, they would look at a declining AP participation rate?
Correct.
And they're not including the ACP in that, correct?
They're not including any other dual credit types of...
That's right.
Yeah. So how could we change that?
Although the state, the state actually does track that. So they actually look at a metric about students enrolled in what they call advanced coursework, which includes AP, IB, dual credit, all of that. So the state actually does a nice job on that.
It depends which, it depends which ranking agency you're, you're talking about because they, they all are different. Some of them will include IB as well, but most of them take into account those two metrics and don't take into account a complete portfolio of kids that are getting junior college credit or four-year college transcripted credit.
They can't because it's not, it's not published in the same way that College Board puts out reports that tell you how many kids are in those courses, yeah.
Okay. So we haven't asked them to change that. Can we ask them to change that?
Yeah, we, we spent about four weeks trying to get ahold of somebody who sits in a black hole and is not accessible by any, it's a mystery person somewhere, and the contact information is, is very, very well-hidden. We actually, the, the straight answer to your question is that we tried to contact US News and World Report and, and talked to the people that put these ratings together. They farm it out to an outside research organization who's basically just fulfilling their contract. And I, I, we did not have any success being able to locate a contact person from, from the report that you're talking about.
Stephanie, this is a topic that Dave and I talked about for the committee in the whole in November, so stay tuned.
Thanks, Mary Ann. Good evening, everyone. How are you? Thank you for having us. I'm going to skip ahead a little bit here. All right. So we are here, myself with Nikki Tamru, along with Principal DeLacary, and we are hoping to encapsulate some of the urgency that you are expressing, that we are feeling and taking action on as well. And the way in which we hope to do that tonight was to really provide you with an authentic diagnostic of how it is that we are planning to achieve the vision this year. And we broke that out into three authentic components for you to really kind of focus in. Learning strands, Nikki's going to give you an idea and perspective on our district-level supports with PD this year. I will do my best to talk through our supervision of instruction and how we are taking a very authentic and deliberate and intentional approach with how we're supervising instruction to get at some of the immediate items that we're all feeling. And then also our school improvement plans. Nikki will share a little bit about the classroom level and the student piece that is coming to play in a really impressive way across the district with what we're doing with our school improvement plans. And to the best for last, Principal DeLacary's going to give you a snapshot of all the, the great things happening at Emerson and how she's really taken this work and has put it into action. I'm going to hand it over to Nikki.
Good evening. I spoke with you about the learning strands in August when I had our back-to-school update, but something that Chris said that really resonated with my learning and teaching team, our learning and teaching team, was what is the, what are the outcomes? So we've, we've really taken some time to look at what are the high-leverage skills and strategies that we want our teachers to know and be able to impart on their students to make them better instructors so that our students are learning and growing, all students are learning and growing. So through the workshop model, we're really looking, the, the one outcome we're looking for is that personalized instruction for all students. There's many words that we could use to describe personalized instruction. That could be responsive teaching, that can be differentiation in the classroom, and we're looking at the workshop model for both reading and math for that strand in order to personalize our instruction for students so that they, all of our students are getting what they need during reading and math. For the content literacy strand, we, we talked about what are the tools that the students need to know, that the teachers need to know and be able to do to, to teach across the content? And one of the, the big focuses this year is going to be on writing. How are we teaching all of our teachers to be reading teachers and writing teachers so that students are reading and writing across all contents? For the behavioral health strand, I don't think I have to tell anyone sitting in this room that anxiety, depression, school refusal, the list goes on and on, trauma for our students, whether it's trauma at home, or bullying at school, or whatever the case may be, our kids are under a lot of pressure. I have two high school, well, actually, I have a kid in college and I have a daughter in high school. So I'm experiencing that right along with some of these board members and our community members. So we know that behavioral health is something that we really need to work on with our, our staff to teach them to how to have skills to recognize trauma in students and then to address the trauma in students. Dr. Moyer is also hitting at this through Thrive D205. And so the behavioral, behavioral health strand is another component to what we're doing through Thrive D205. And we really are looking to provide students with support and teachers with trauma-informed practices. For the inquiry-based learning strand, we're really looking to get at Quad D. We talk about the six Cs, we talk about Quad D. How are we teaching our students to be collaborative, how to communicate with each other, and how to solve real-world problems? For co-teaching, this is really based off of the program analysis through, the special education program analysis that Mary Ann conducted last year. And we realized it looking at the data that we could be doing better by this program. So we're really trying to provide our teachers, our co-teaching pairs, with a reboot, if you will, of what good co-teaching strategies are, how to find that time to plan when we know that there is never enough hour, there are never enough hours in the day for that. Anna Baramas and Ariana Leonard will be leading that strand, and I think they're going to do some good work with that. And then our outcome is, you know, how are we making sure that we have rigorous instruction, rigorous instructional opportunities for all of our students? Not our higher achievers, not our middle-of-the-road kids, for all of our students. For the teacher leadership strand, we're really looking to build leadership capacity within our district, not just for those teachers who are looking to be, become district office people, or principals, or assistant principals. How can we build the capacity of all of our teachers to see themselves as leaders, to step up in their PLCs, and to have those critical conversations about student data and students not making adequate growth? And looking at, if we were looking at math, they would be exit tickets. And, and being able to have that, that crucial conversation with a colleague to say, this isn't good enough, or my data's not good enough, your data's better than mine, what are you doing that I could be doing differently? And then for our innovation co-strand that Scott and Mary Ann are going to be leading, that's really what is the development and the scaling, scaling for blended and interdisciplinary learning, easy for me to say, even though I created a course at the high school about it. So that's really what we're looking at for, for the learning strands.
Thanks, Nikki. In terms of supervision of instruction, all the educators across the district are evaluated using what's called the Charlotte Danielson Framework for Excellence. And one of the elements that I'd like to share with you is that the framework is broken into four different components. Professional responsibilities, domain two is the classroom environment, domain three is teaching and learning, and domain one is the planning and preparation. Professional responsibilities is domain four. And one of the things that we're really trying to do with this framework that has already existed and exists in, in many districts, is really be intentional with that. So what that means is actually harvesting out from the framework the components that we want to see in the classroom. We've engaged the principals in a really engaging activity that actually is this Thursday this week, to start beginning that work and continuing that work that has already started in the beginning of the year and in the past. And I think it's going to make a big difference in terms of us actually living out the way in which we are evaluating teachers versus just using it as a tool that is only used at certain times throughout the year. So the idea is for the increased focus to actually have that framework come to life and have people start to speak and live that language, not only in the way they teach, but in the way they talk about how they're teaching. The second item up there, collaborating is principals for best and next practices. We talk a lot about not just doing best practices, but what's next and trying to get ahead of the curve. One of the things that has come out this year is our collaboration amongst the principals in the classrooms. Today, just an example, just a quick snapshot, I, along with five other colleagues in the Learning and Teaching Department, were in the school, and we were able to get into 14 classes in an hour and 15 minutes. We then were able to calibrate after that. We're gathering data while we're in the classroom, aligned to these different components. We're sitting down with the principal at the end of the visit, we're talking through it, and then we're disaggregating that data as well to see where we're growing, where we can kind of focus in more. That level of holistic and almost sort of swarming of the teaching and learning is a really phenomenal way to get the principal caught up into speed and also to get those conversations going in which we're talking about what are the best and next practices. Related to that is the calibration of observation and evaluation. So we will be looking into the actual diagnostic process of whether it be watching a lesson or visiting a classroom and actually evaluating that together and seeing where are we similar, where are we different, how are we holding teachers accountable, how are we supporting teachers where needed, and making sure that our, not only our ratings, but that our feedback is incredibly effective so that the instruction changes and improves to get at some of the urgency that we talked about earlier. Our coaching model is strong, and we have a number of coaches across the district. We are going to be utilizing the rigor and relevance framework for that work. One of the things that we focus on is what we call Quad D. What I think is really impressive and worth sharing is in that example of being in the classrooms today, we are gathering data related to the four different quads of our rigor and relevance framework, and we're sharing that with the principal, who then again shares that with the staff. I share that detail with you because I think that alignment gets at what it is that we're seeking, which is an actual continuity between the way that we're evaluating, the way that we're supporting teachers, and the way that we're designing our professional learning. So the data components are strong and they're consistent, and I think they're also very comprehensive because they're coming from multiple angles. It's not just one principal's perspective. It's seven people, and they're building multiple times a year. The last one is capacity building for our PLCs. That's our professional learning communities. I'm personally working with four different principals this year in terms of their evaluation. Each one of them has the development and the capacity building of a PLC as one of their goals. And the reason I think that is most impressive is that's the way in which that principal is spreading the work. They're coaching, obviously, different teachers on, you know, a one-off basis that they might be paired with, but really, when they're getting into those PLCs, we've seen a real authentic look at how are we getting teachers to actually have data in hand in their meetings to start to talk about some of those gaps that we talked about as being concerning, and not just talking about it, but actually then taking action on that. We are progress monitoring in those PLCs as well, so consider and think of a group of teachers that are regularly looking at a data set and actually seeing, you know, how is this particular student progressing? How are they not? What is working? What is not working? And that is where that, that problem-solving model comes into play. We have work to do in that, and I think that will be the future work with the MTSS Committee as well. But I'm really excited about, you know, those four examples I used with just the principals that I'm working with this year, and they're all really committed to that and really excited about it as well. The last item there, it says real focus on specific students, which we talked about in that example. But the last part where it says taking action, I think, is, is really intentional to include here. One of the mottos that we have as our first team is to leave with action. And one of the reasons we chose that is we want outcomes, not just as a leadership team, but as an administration. That's the principals included. So they wanted that motto, and they ended up developing it, so, developing it. So I'm hoping that, that, that action will start to play out, you know, in the slides in the future, but also that you'll start to feel and, and see that alignment even more as we, we progress.
Something else that we're doing to lead with action is based off of a question that we got from Chris regarding the KPI presentation. So I want to talk to you just a little bit about what I'm doing with coaches this year. There's always grows and glows when you have a new team. So Scott and I are both new to the team. There's some grows that we have, but some of the glows are the fact that we can take a fresh set of eyes at the way that we've been doing business. So I've put three things in place along with the coaches and the learning and teaching team this year regarding coaches specifically. Their coaching log in the past, right, wrong, or otherwise, just the way that it was, is that we were sort of collecting data a little bit differently. They all had a log, but they were logging it a little bit inconsistently. Therefore, when we... Therefore, when we try to collect data on time, task, what they're doing, where they're doing it, who they're doing it with, what the coaching cycle looks like, are they just gathering resources, are they actually in classrooms changing instructional practices? So we worked with Mary Ann to, along with three really amazing coaches, to put a new coaching log together where there are dropdown menus so that we are collecting really reliable data that we can take a look at. Something else that we're doing is that we didn't necessarily, I think, in the past, maybe do the best job that we could have done looking at that data. So we have some things that we're putting in place. The coaches are going to be reflecting on their logs weekly. The coaches are going to be looking at their logs with their principal monthly to look at which teachers are they working with, what are they doing with those teachers, are they in the classrooms at least 60% to 70% of their day? Okay? Something else that we're, I've been putting into place through my work with the coaches and the principals is that it used to be the coaching for the willing, and that's not an option anymore. Coaching is for all. So what is one touch point that you can take this year with 100% of the staff to ensure that we are all utilizing the coaches in some way? Okay? I hope that answers part of your question in your email. So regarding our school improvement, I'm just going to talk briefly. Shaleen's going to do the heavy lifting here. I think it is always so powerful to hear what we're doing, but how is that actually happening in a building? So for example, every single principal has a gap-closing growth goal this year. That's based off the program analysis from our Special Education Report, and they all know that there is a culture goal, and they all know that there is a gap-closing progress goal. And Shaleen has done an amazing job of really taking a look, a deep dive into her day, data, to look at, let's say, fifth-grade students. How many of those fifth-grade students are males, and how many are females? How many of them met on IAR? How many didn't? How many of those fifth-grade students were EL students that met on IAR or exceeded? How many of them didn't? The list goes on and on. She's done a really nice job. Mary Ann has done a great job of sitting with her to really look at the data. So she's created her theory of action. So if we do this, then this will happen. We have steps along the way where she will be, she'll have an opportunity to meet with her evaluator to talk about her school improvement plan, the progress that she's making on her school improvement plan. How does she know what progress that is? And if we're not making progress, what are we doing about it? Kind of like the Plan Do Study Act, right? We know that this isn't working, so let's not wait till the end of the year to set a new goal. Let's set a new goal now, and what is that going to look like? They are using their SMART goals as they always have, and like I said, the action plans are developed for each quarter. So what am I going to do in quarter one? I'm going to look at that data. I'm going to, if, if we're not making our goals, what are we going to do differently? Set a new goal for quarter two, and then three and four. And again, I can't hit on the gap-closing growth goal enough. It's, it's a huge priority for us. To answer your question, Chris, flat and negative growth, is that okay? No, it's not okay. And we are putting things in place to address it. And I'm going to let Shaleen talk a little bit about what she's doing with her school improvement plan to do that.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. So one of the things that's most important to me as a principal is the school improvement plan. I led this process for, in my previous role in my previous district, and it was always frustrating and disheartening when you would go into buildings and ask teachers, "What are, what is your school improvement plan?" And they have no idea. So my biggest goal this year is to make it something that's tangible. It's something that we will reference at every late start and every staff meeting because every time I have time in front of the staff or with my staff, it's going to be about the two school improvement goals that we have. So the first thing that I did this year in starting the school improvement plan process was utilize leadership team. I have a member from every grade level, every, from the specials team, from the encore teams, so specialists, meaning special ed, EL, as well as a representative of the art teacher. I also added a para educator, or an educational assistant, to the leadership team this year because I felt it was really critical to building the culture, that every single group has a voice. So what we did was we first reviewed last year's SIP to determine where we were at, have we met goals, what do we need to continue working on? The entire staff reviewed various data to determine our opportunities for development. And then we took the staff's findings back to the leadership team to kind of synthesize that information and refine our goals and areas for growth so that we were doing some of the behind-the-scenes work, and then bringing it back to the staff in draft form. The school improvement plan that we've written has multiple goals. Some of them are to be achieved in this year. Some of them are long-term goals that will be achieved over the next two to three years. So as we finish shorter-term goals, we will start working on our longer-term goals, as well as adding in additional goals as we keep moving forward. So the data that we use, the first one was the Five Essentials Survey. We looked at the top three performing areas and the bottom three performing areas. In the Illinois Assessment of Readiness, we looked at achievement gaps between students of poverty and non-free and reduced lunch students, those students that are identified as EL and non-EL, and those students that have IEPs versus those who do not. We also looked at FNP benchmark data and identified students that were not reading on grade level, as well as Eureka module data, and identified students approaching standards. So not quite meeting standards, but approaching. So those were the four major data pieces that we used. So this is a picture of our teachers digging through some of the data. They, we did it old-school with chart paper, lots of graphs and charts. I taught them what they were looking for. I introduced them to each one of the IAR reports, because there's lots of great reports in IAR. I know I had some great philosophical debates with my teachers about the quality of IAR and kind of educating them on trend. Once you have multiple years of data, it is becoming a more valid test, having that conversation about, well, now it's, last year it was IAR. It's a whole new test set. No, it's not. IAR purchased the test questions from Park, so it's actually the same test, just shorter. So having some of those learning opportunities and teachable moments with staff, as well as then showing them different reports, including the student roster data, where they get to see each individual student's achievement in different strands. So not just an overall ELA and math score, but breaking it down into strands to see, look, the student is weak in vocabulary, the student is weak in writing, and so forth, because that will help us as we teach this year. So these are some of the methods to our madness. The top three, math, culture, and literacy, were actually the reflections from the previous year's school improvement plan. The bottom three were synthesized data from the different data points. So you can see that we had third, fourth, and fifth grade data. This was for IAR. I did include, one of my big pushes with the staff, which I think is a push with all of the principals in this district, and it was previously with Michelle, is that every single one of our students is ours. So kindergarten paired with third grade, first grade paired with fourth grade, and second grade paired with fifth grade. It was, everybody is digging into this data, and we're knowing where our students are at. It doesn't matter if you're a K-1, 2 teacher, we're still going to dig into IAR data. Some of the key celebrations that we had from Five Essentials were that students reported feeling safe at school, parents felt involved in decisions, new teachers felt supported by the district, which is outstanding. Moving on, what was really impressive, and I continue to be impressed about in this district, is that there is no, virtually no content, content gap between ELA and math. ELA and math are performing equally in terms of IAR, at least at Emerson it is, and that's pretty outstanding. Usually, ELA is 5% to 10% outperforming math. The gender gap between males and females in ELA and math closed by the time they reached fifth grade at Emerson, so that's something to celebrate as well. And then in IAR, FNP and Eureka data, it showed, when we triangulated that data and we compare it, it shows consistent trends. So it confirmed some of the hypotheses that we had about initial IAR data. We used FNP to confirm that. We used Eureka to confirm it, so it was really good to see that we're seeing the same trends, which also helps confirm with our teachers that all of these tests are valid. Some of the key opportunities, there's three things that we're going to be working on. The first one is streamlining PBIS and behavior systems and procedures so that the learning environment becomes much stronger. I, my personal philosophy, and I think a lot of people, a lot of educators share it, is that culture is the foundation for innovation. There is no learning if there is not a solid culture among teachers, among students, among parents, among everyone. So I'm really excited about the Thrive D205. I've continued pushing it with parents to help support them as well. But one thing that I feel very strongly about is, if you've seen the Brene Brown Netflix special, you know, she talks about how she could not, she wanted, she was asked to speak at a tech company, she's asked to speak at a lot of tech companies, but they never want her to talk about risk or failure. And when you need that type of innovation, you have to talk about risk and failure. So that's part of the culture that needs to be strengthened, is making teachers feel safe. Modeling for my teachers, when I fail, I've already done it many times in the two months that I've been principal. So I model it. I apologize when something could have gone better. Tell me how to fix it, because that's what I want them to model for their students, because then I want their students to be doing that in the classroom as well. We have to model it for one another. Some of the other key opportunities, like Nikki talked a little bit about, was really drilling down to finding out which students need which personalized learning developed for them. So for example, there were approximately three students per grade level in grades three, four, and five, which you can probably state is true in K-1, 2 if that's the trend. Three students per grade level that were not meeting standards, they are living in poverty on free and reduced lunch, but they do not have an IEP, and they are not an EL. So those are students right there, that there is no reason why they should not be meeting standards. We need to build relationships with them. We need to make sure that their parents feel welcome coming into the school. They may not feel like part of the community if they are living in poverty. We need to reach out to them and make sure that they are coming to the school so that those students see their parents as an active member. And then the bottom piece is that students that are either identified as free and reduced lunch and/or EL are approaching standards and not below, providing intervention in differentiated personalized instruction. That means if they're close, if they're approaching standards on IAR, that means that we are definitely capable of getting them on grade level by the end of the year. So really setting specific targets for each individual students. And one of the ways that we're also doing that, going back to that first bullet point with the systems and procedures, is having, I'm having my teachers immediately set calendar dates for progress monitoring. So there are four to six weeks of progress monitoring throughout the year have already been set. So they will be coming back and having, knowing when those conversations have to take place with teachers, or about students, excuse me. So I talked a little bit about the implementation with the progress monitoring, as well as the fact that the SIP will be a standing agenda item. All of the professional development will be based off of SIP goals and identified opportunities. And as we've talked about with interdisciplinary learning for students, I think it's critical to make interdisciplinary learning for teachers. Making sure that anything that's being professionally developed, any professional development opportunities at the district level are integrated with what we're doing at the building, so that teachers do not see these things as silos and feel overwhelmed, but instead they see how everything impacts learning, and they feel supported. Collaborating with district staff, having PLC conversations that are based on student data, specific groups and students, as I said. And the last thing that I'm really excited about is that we've added fifth-grade student advisors to review our school improvement plan in about a month, as well as help us create surveys for the students, come up with kindness events, to really build the culture again. So that's pretty much for Emerson. Lots of exciting stuff.
Thank you. On behalf of the Learning and Teaching Department, we'd like to thank you for the opportunity to share our data with you and the next steps, the action steps that we plan on taking. Do you have any questions for us at this time?
Sure, we do. At first, I just want to say thank you. That was a really well-thought-out, thoughtful presentation, so thank you.
Sure.
All right. Who's up? Karen?
Yeah, and I really wanted to highlight, both last year and this year, I really liked having the principals come in. I think Christine Trendle from Jackson last year.
Yes.
It really helps us identify that you're linking all these things. So instead of us just looking at the results and saying, "Oh, is this really what we want?" and then making everybody panic, which we don't want to do.
Correct.
What you are trying to do is thread them all. And I think, Shaheen, you were talking about this, where everything links, and so I think that that's really key. And I, so I really want to highlight that. I think that it's probably at different stages, at different buildings, et cetera. So one question that I had was, oh, another piece that I really liked is the correlation, I think, that you illustrated for us of the IAR, which is the state report card, which everybody's going to look at, right? But what we're using internally, which is the Fontana's panel for our reading, ELA, and then the Eureka for the math. So that's another key piece. So what we're, what we're using for instruction and learning is, is what will improve the scores that the state is holding us accountable. Because that's my big, my big key, is I'd like us in November to look at this whole AP thing, because we can know all this detail, but the people who are paying the taxes here, who want to look here or move away from here, are going to look at those, you know, what is Illinois doing? What's US News and Report saying about us? What's NIEC saying about us? Whether we like it or not, what we have to do is figure out a way of how do you link it? And so I really like the fact that you highlighted that both the reading that we're implementing, and we're wondering how it was going, right, is all in alignment. And that you're looking at systemically across the board, how do we bring all employees up? How do, how do we bring all students up? To that, though, I do have a specific question. So I know that we have various different opinions about homework and all, but this illustrates to me that what we need, and one, yes, we look at the district level, but we also want to look at what are the different subgroups, what are the, and what are we doing, you know, like, school-wise, grade-wise, et cetera? But I like the fact that we're looking at it individual-student-wise, and there's probably common themes or common areas where the students are struggling that can, that, anyway, I'll just go into the, the whole homework linkage. So I think that we can help some students when we find out where they are struggling, what is it that we can help them with, like we are with, with our employees, right? It's, we need to help them succeed. And so what I'm looking at is, this data can tell us, is there additional skill set that can be achieved through doing some meaningful homework for some of the students? Not no homework, all kinds of homework, whatever. So I kind of wanted to throw that out to, what are we doing with that segment of it? Because all the students will feel better about themselves, the behavioral health will improve as they succeed. And it's not just getting a certain letter grade, whatever. It is that they can, they're developing the skill set that they need in life.
So at the November meeting, I will be doing some work with you in a workshop-type model around homework and what the research behind homework says. So one of the things that I've learned, and I've worked, worked in many districts, I've worked in some, I've worked in West Aurora and Glendale Heights, and so this is the most affluent, high-achieving district I've ever worked in. What I have found through my experiences is, are that if a student is struggling in school, we, it's those six hours that we have control over, what we're doing with those kiddos. When they go home, if we send them home with homework, they may not have the support at home to do that homework, they may not be able to do it on their own. So I don't necessarily think giving our struggling students more homework, or homework in general, is what's going to impact them. I think what's going to impact them is teaching our teachers high-level strategies that they can use in the classroom to ensure that our students are learning and growing, and that we're maximizing every single minute that we have with them. The research shows that the teacher is the number-one indicator of student success.
Sure. And I get that, but I don't want us to say every student is the same, and every household is the same, and every situation's the same. So for example, my daughter, there was not issues at home, right? And so I don't, I, I want us to look at the students. I want us to not pigeonhole and make blanket statements, is all I'm trying to articulate here. Because there was meaningful homework for her to bring home, to do, so that she can feel better in the classroom, because she's not behind her classmates. so that she can feel better in the classroom because she's not behind her classmates. So it does help.
Oh, I understand what you're saying now, thank you. I think what we're going to be looking at is what's that balance? Trying to find that balance for all of our students. Okay.
Thank you all, because everything we do here is driven by what you guys are doing out there. So I do appreciate it. I have two things that I'm kind of just trying to wrap my head around, and there might not be an answer to it, but we, we have a lot of ways of evaluating how good or bad we are doing at preparing our students for being college-ready. And only that kind of one slide that showed how the post-secondary experience, how we are doing at making them life or career-ready. Are there other ways that are in place that we can determine whether or not we are doing the best we can for those students? That's kind of my first area of.
Yeah, great question. I completely, I think, see where you're coming from in terms of not just putting a number on our students or even, you know, more, more of a disservice putting them all into one number. One of the things that we are going to take a look at, and we have begun this work, is looking at the idea of what are those essential elements or the portrait of a graduate that we want to see? And I think gathering input and continuing that conversation is a really strong one to see how it is that we do measure outcomes for our students. Whether it be, you know, an interest in AP participation, which is a, you know, a valid thing, or whether it be another element that the community wants to see as well. And I think that conversation will be a really strong one and I think it'll be a really relevant one, given the timeframe.
I mean, I was inspired at the Business Incubator last night, hearing about that program. And I'm just wondering, if kids are inspired through that, they might go directly into that career program. And I, that's not a fail, that's a huge success. And I feel like there should be some way for us to celebrate that.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I'm, I'm very interested in seeing how that plays out, and I'd love to hear more about that.
Can I just interject there? That's also on the November committee of the whole meeting agenda. In fact, we were just on a conference call this morning.
You guys are stealing all the thunder.
We were just on a conference call this morning with a school district from Pennsylvania. Indian Prairie presented on this at the Luda Conference. District 214 was a pioneer in this because Dave Schuler was the president of AASA when they were doing a lot of work, which was called Redefining Ready. Glenbard is another district that has, has done this. So we're not exactly going to be inventing this. I think we can establish a process for some community input and, and determine a more holistic approach to being able to take into account different pathways that students might want to pursue and different competencies that we might want to see so that we can balance some of the traditional standardized measures with some of the other types of life-ready things that we also value and coordinate that with what the community says it values so that it's, and it's something that the board can certify to, that, that we then can develop maybe a KPI system and a dashboard and a method of being able to demonstrate that to the community so that we can tell our own story and we don't have to have somebody using kind of invalid types of information because it's the only information they have, I guess.
The other thing I just wanted to add is that the, the state is actually also requiring us to start reporting more information about career opportunities that students have. So they're interested, obviously, in our students being college-ready, but also career-ready. And so they're asking us to report things about students. For example, have they been, are they involved in a particular program of study that's, you know, career-oriented? Are they earning different kinds of certifications, things along those lines? So we are starting to have to collect and report that more systematically as well.
That's great, I'm really happy to hear that. The second thing I just wanted to get some more kind of perspective on is the stats and the, the programs surrounding our ELL student growth. You know, when I see elementary school, the proficiency is at 86%, and then it drops to 60% at middle school, which is, makes me very anxious. And then it looks like we're recovering in high school somewhat. What are we attributing that pretty significant drop in middle school? I mean, are there, are there social reasons?
Yeah, I had a question about that too, Mary Ann. I was wondering if that was due to potentially the influx of live students that we had last year at the middle school?
So I think there are a couple of different things going on. So one thing is, most of our EL students are younger, are at the, I mean, that's where most of our students come to us, is, is at the elementary grade levels. We see students progress at the earlier grade levels faster because their proficiency is more in the sort of speaking and listening realm, and they tend to pick up those skills quite quickly and move along quite quickly. And once they get to higher levels of proficiency, it becomes harder and harder to, you know, sort of get that, get all the way to the, to the end there. So that's part of the reason why we see different levels of growth at the elementary, middle, and high school. So that's one thing that's going on. I mean, I think there are probably some things about which students came to us and when they came to us as well. The state's measures are good in the sense that they are very individualized to the students. So their targets are based on where they, you know, what, when they came in and what their specific score was when they came to us, and then where we want them to get to. So that's good, but that means there can also be a lot of variation in terms of what you might expect for progress for those students. Because if you came in as a seventh-grade student who had never been to school before, like you're in a much different position than a student who came to us as a third grader and has had the opportunity to make a bunch of progress already. And so we are, we did see, you know, a fairly big increase in, in those sorts of students who didn't have any previous educational experiences over the last, last year especially, and somewhat the year before as well.
So there was this increase in students that came to us last year that didn't grow with us through elementary school?
Yeah.
Okay.
Didn't we get about 45 students in January?
We got, yes, we got more than that because they were spread. York got quite a few, Fisher and Churchill were the biggest recipients.
I think that's important to note, because, I mean, it looks like there's this big fail that something between summer of fifth grade and start of sixth grade is, is happening here. But if there's other factors, I think it's important to note that. It, it also makes me think, and not just the ELL component, but does the factors of, I can't remember which chart it was, when it went, the, the math numbers and the ELA numbers from fourth to eighth grade, whichever one that was, the math numbers, you know, during that period, you know, when you compare it over the years, there, there's been a significant change in curriculum, right? Like that, those eighth graders, like I have one, never learned Eureka math in elementary school. They had to adjust in middle school. So I wonder, I'm wondering, did we, we never, there was no kind of, you know, like you said, those math numbers were across the board. Did that impact show in other places? The, the way these kids have been learning differently in that kind of pack of time? I'm not sure.
I don't know.
Clarification, the math numbers increased. Yeah, the math numbers increased, the ELA numbers were constant across. We can go back to that slide if you want.
They both increased, math just increased more, I believe, at the seventh grade level.
That's the, go back, that's the slide we're talking about.
So that's the math?
That's math.
And that's reading. So we stayed pretty, this is constant, solid.
Somebody else? All right, Beth?
Yeah, I wanted to say thank you for all the work that you guys are doing in addressing some of the concerns that have come out of the data. I like the fact that we're looking, especially, Shaleen, what you were saying in your school and the work that you're doing, that we're looking at all levels of students. We're looking at the students that are struggling and pulling that data and really breaking it down and looking at what they need and how we can support them better and where those issues are arising. I like that we're looking at AP courses and, you know, why those test scores might be going down, and we're going to break that down. But I also like that we're going to try to give more challenges and opportunities to the kids that are in that middle group. And so rather than just looking at the, the average numbers, you guys are really breaking all that data down, and I, I just, I like that, I like seeing that. So thank you.
Okay, I have a couple of questions and then somebody else. So the first thing is, so, you know, I read through all your school improvement plans, which is really exciting.
Thank you for reading them.
Yes, I did. They were good. But I, you know, a plan is great, but how, how, where is the accountability? And how is that measured? And how do you, you know, keep people accountable? You know, some of these, the school improvement team is very large, how do you manage that? I guess, you know, like what does it look like for making sure that this happens?
Absolutely. There's several things that we've put in place. So our principals have the opportunity during our retreats to collaborate and look at the goals that they're creating. They have time with Mary Ann to take a look at the data, what data are they going to collect? Throughout the year, we build in school improvement time with our principals with each other, and we provide them with a protocol to take a look at their data. If this, then this, is it working? If not, what's your next step? So that's what they do with each other, with us at district office. They are also required to post their plan on their school website. They are required to share their plan with their parents and with all their staffs, staff. And then they look at their plan, like Shaleen said, monthly with their staff. They meet, we provide learning and teaching funds for them to meet with their school improvement team on a monthly basis so that they can look at the plan, look at the data, and then create action steps based off of what the data is telling them. Also, through the evaluation process, as Scott said, he evaluates four of our principals. I evaluate four of our principals, Dr. Moyer evaluates our new principals, and then Dr. Cohen has some of our principals. So we all are looking at their school improvement plans, asking guiding questions, asking for data about how they know whether they're, they're meeting their goals or not, providing them with, almost like a critical friend, like, okay, if it's not working, what are you going to do differently about it? What is that going to look like? How are you going to articulate that to parents and staff? And then when, when are we, when are we going to look at that data again? So that we make sure that we are keeping our eyes on it, to your point.
Right, so then, okay, so thank you for that. And then my next question is, you know, there's, most people had a PLC goal in, I guess I, it seemed to be around an effective PLC or running an effective PLC, or I'm not sure exactly. But I, I guess the question, I feel like, you know, we continue to talk about PLCs, and I feel like at what point, I mean, are we, I, I guess, you know, it's like, why, why aren't we there? And I don't know if that's a good way to say it, but that, you know, why aren't we there? Why isn't that a well-oiled machine where we're just working on a topic to professionally learn?
I think there's several answers to that. One is turnover. When you have new leadership, I'll use myself as an example, at Hawthorne, when I was a new principal there, we had to kind of recalibrate and talk about what, what is a PLC? What are the expectations? You always are going through storming, norming, forming. So I would say, learning and teaching right now, we're forming, we're a brand-new team. So learning and teaching has been around for many, many years, but I would say there's only two of the people on the team that aren't new. So then you have to re-norm, then you have to form as a team before you can look at data and before you can be a high-functioning team. So I think some of those same things are happening with our district team, with our learning and teaching team, and also in our buildings. Shaleen's new this year, so she had to work on culture with her staff. They need to know who she is and what she's about, what are her non-negotiables? What are, what are her PLC's goals and what are those going to look like? How are they creating goals together as a team? Also, teachers are constantly moving and shifting. So you may have a teacher who was on a kindergarten high-flying team last year. That kindergarten teacher moves, and let's say she's on a second-grade team. Now she's a new member of that team, so they have to reform. So I would say the answer to it, really, at the bottom line is that PLCs are always an ongoing process where we're hopefully never storming, that does happen, right? But when we're through the storming phase and we get into the norming phase, that's when we really can start to look at data. And also, I think, we've been saying that we're a PLC district for many, many years, but it really was just recently, three years ago, that we started providing professional learning for our principals and for our teachers about what a true PLC looks like. And before, there was really oversight of it. So I would say, especially with our, our middle, I'm sorry, our elementary principals, this is the first year that they've had Cindy. So they had their learning with Cindy last year with a small group. Now they have Cindy Harrison, our outside consultant, coming into their buildings to provide them with feedback, but they didn't have that before. So sorry if that was a long answer to a short question.
No, I, that was a really thoughtful answer, and I like hearing that background. Because I just think, you know, it's an, I think it's an important piece. I mean, I was a teacher, and I think you can't do it by yourself. You can't, especially now. There's just too many needs and you need to help each other. So it's important that that PLC is working well, and I guess, so I was just, you know.
Well, there's two things I'd like to add to that, Kara. One is that as Mary Ann is getting the data warehouse up to speed and refined, it's, it's going to be, it's going to help our PLCs function better. She's been trying to train people in buildings. And we're still trying to get the data to be more robust to where we, we'd like it to be. But we still see PLCs that are, that are airing more on the side of a lot of co-planning and not as much looking at student work and looking at data. And that's part of the evolution of the coaching and the maturation process of the PLCs. So the second thing, though, as Scott was talking about supervision, and we're really emphasizing with our principals that they have to stop thinking that supervision means two formal evaluations every other year. And so we're, we're really talking about the importance of supervising the PLCs, that that is, if, if, if teacher collaboration is, is the driver that we believe it is, then that's where you should be putting your supervision time as to making sure that those PLCs are high-functioning and that you can verify what's going on in there. So we, there, it's just, it's somewhat complex, there's no one answer. I don't mean to be evasive, but we are approaching it, I think, from a variety of different angles to try to continue to strengthen that work.
Can I do one more? All right, sorry, I got a lap, one more. I will, I will. Okay, so the last thing is culture. A lot of people had culture goals, and, you know, you hear culture, Trump strategy, and, you know, there's lots of things, and, you know, culture is very important. And I think we want to nurture a culture of growth. And I guess one thing that, and I don't know if this is really a question or more just something that I would hope to see. So I hope that, you know, when you talk about culture, that all, what is it? 1,500 employees or however many, you know, about that, that work here? What is it that each of us, and that includes us, brings to the district that improves the culture? You know, instead of just, sometimes I think it's easy to be, well, as my husband said to me before I, you know, ran for the board, you either run for the board or you stop complaining. You know, like you can't sort of wait for it to happen. Like what do you bring to the table? What do you bring as a solution? You know, what do you offer that improves the culture? And I think it's, you know, maybe it's not something that you do in a meeting, but something to think about for every school. And what, what does each person bring to this district to nurture growth, to nurture a culture of, you know, safety and kindness? And, you know, if you make a mistake, we all make mistakes. I mean, we will all say something that we'll go home and go, you know, I wish I hadn't said it. But, you know, can we show that we're growing? And I think that that is something that, when I see all these culture growth, culture goals, I think it's important that every person owns it. And so that's what I personally would like to see us move to as a district.
Yeah, and I don't want to give a spoiler alert to what we're, the work we're going to do on Thursday with our first team, but we have moved and shifted our, our name to first team for a reason, because we know that it starts with us. We, we are the leaders of this entire district and setting the tone for everyone else. So one of the activities that we're, we're doing on Thursday is taking an action step of how we are going to own the culture of our first team so that we can impart that on the people that we work with every day so that students, all students are achieving. So I agree with you 100%.
Thanks, that's good. All right, Jim, I think I'm done.
All right, if you want to jump in at any time, you're more than.
Don't worry, I will.
All right. So, first, first, I have to, I have to exercise my penchant for stating the obvious, but Nikki, it's something you said about storming and norming and, and, you know, I just want to remind my fellow board members, you know, you, you can't have a world-class organization without world-class management and stability in that management. So, I think collectively, that's something we should all keep in the back of our minds. And what I'd really like to ask Shaleen to do is go back to that slide with, well, but I'm not really going to ask you because I think I'd be stoned by my fellow board members.
Okay. We're, we're, that's not the culture we have.
Well, I'm going to ask my fellow board member, the one, the, the slide you had about all the paper pasted to the wall.
Yeah.
You gave a very clear presentation on the nuts and bolts of what you're doing in your, in your building to come up with, with a good plan. If I asked Shaleen to spend just three minutes kind of going through that, would, would people object or? I'm willing to skip it.
We're, we're all good. Go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, if you could just talk about.
Support you.
Sure.
About how you led your team through that and, and, you know, kind of the nuts and bolts of, of what we should take away from, from those six sheets? Or are they three sheets of paper? It doesn't matter.
So, yeah, so, starting with, you know, math, culture, and literacy, the first thing I'll focus on is the culture one in the middle. So, one of the things that we talked about was trust. Teachers feel like there is a lot of trust, but one of the things that they indicated on the Five Essential Survey was that they often lacked a clear understanding of the multiple things going on in the school and the district. So, part of that was, like I said, trying to integrate all of the things in professional development that we have going on, as well as being open and saying, you know what? I'm not really sure. I'm going to have to get back to you on that, particularly being new. You'll see here that there's PLCs pop up, some of the things, that's an action step, things that they want to continue. So, definitely having that PLC time, but as Cara mentioned, you know, making sure that it's valuable PLC time. It's, you know, there's a continuum of PLC. There are seven steps of implementation. And usually, a lot of times, teams get stuck around step four. And it's, it's discussion, it's sharing what they're doing in the classroom, it's a little bit of data, but it's not examining student work. It's not digging into standards, which you see down here, you know, reading, one of our highest standards in fourth grade for ELA was reading for literacy 4.3. So, that was really a model for teachers of what I want to see in their PLCs, which is looking at, this standard is high and why is it high? And was it high for every single teacher? And if we're three teachers that are on a team and you taught it really well, then we need to figure out what you did because we need to start doing what you're doing. So, it's having, getting into those deep conversations. Math, like I talked about math and literacy, we, in order to integrate things, we made a personalized learning goal. I really believe with the school improvement plan, less text is more. So, one of the things that we did was we got rid of an ELA goal and a math goal because if I want my teachers to see how things are integrated and that good teaching strategies go across contents, then we're not going to have separate content goals. We're going to walk the walk. So, that's why we have a personalized learning goal that brings in math and literacy. These are just strengths that we had. Actually, comparing and contrasting was a weakness that we saw across all grade levels when we looked at IAR. So, that's something that we want to look at our curriculum, how we taught it and make sure, you know, one of the things that we talked about was that we don't have a lot of paired text opportunities from our current programming. So, one of the things that I'm doing with our money is buying paired text for our bookroom because that's the only way that our students will learn how to compare and contrast. In addition to, when you look at students of poverty, students who are in EL, academic language and academic discourse, what we are also hypothesizing is that students don't understand what compare and contrast mean. They don't understand what identify means. So, when they see that in a test prompt, they can't actually do it because they don't understand the first word that's coming up on the test question. And then one of the other things that I talked about, that we also looked at, that I didn't really highlight, was that opportunity to close the achievement gap, was when I identified those three students per grade level. If we get three students per grade level to meet, that closes the achievement gap by 20% and it raises the entire grade level by 10%. So, again, it's like an immediate opportunity to raise those goals. But what I'm also trying to communicate with teachers, I, my instructional coach told me that all my teachers thought I was funny on the first day in August and after we did this, she told me they don't think you're funny anymore. So, but one of the things I'm trying to get them to understand is, data is really critical. Numbers are critical, but at the end of the day, I want us to put the numbers aside and I want us to go teach the little humans that are in front of us. Because those three students that are on, that are living in poverty and not meeting, if we get them on grade level, we are setting them up for success in middle school at York and we are getting them out of the poverty cycle by the time they leave us. So, it's walking that fine line of, we have really got to concentrate on this data, but at the end of the day, I want you building relationships with kids, making them feel safe, making them smile, because that's how they're going to learn.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. That was extremely helpful.
It was more than three minutes, I'm sorry.
That's, it was fantastic. So, I guess, I can't figure out how to make this sound like a question, but I'll do my best. You know, Shaleen, you're obviously very good at the, at the school improvement planning. Clearly, you've got a strong background in, in PLCs. When it comes to PLCs and coaching and school improvement plans, do, do we have what, for the lack of a better term, kind of a PLC, like with our elementary teachers and our, and our not teachers, but our elementary principals and our middle school principals getting together, comparing notes, comparing what, what works better?
Sure. Scott and I have the amazing opportunity of meeting with different groups each month. So, I get to work with the EC5 principals in a PLC environment and he gets to work with the 612 principals in a PLC environment. So, every time we come together, there's, there's data that we're looking at, there are conversations that we're having around that data and action steps that we're putting in place for the data.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
And then my last thing is, is when it comes to, to both PLCs and coaching, I mean, you know, I think any school district can find other school districts that do one little thing better than they do. Do we look around at our peers for people that, for instance, have more experience and, and have been doing PLCs longer at a higher level than us? And, and same with coaching. Coaching is, is clearly fairly new to this district and, and we're, you know, I would say, in the infancy stages of coaching. Are there other districts that we can look to, to get some tips and go on a field trip and see there's inaction? I mean, it sounds like we have a PLC consultant that comes in.
We do. We have Cindy Harrison. She comes in, not necessarily to answer your question about PLCs, to answer your question, yes, generally speaking, there are always other districts that we can learn from and there are districts that can learn from us.
Right.
So, one of the things that we're doing this week, actually, is all three middle schools, we have a professional developer from the Teachers College at Columbia University coming in and teaching the workshop model for reading instruction so that the teachers can debrief before the lesson, see workshop inaction, all 75 minutes, what does that look like? And then debrief after. So, that we're providing that ongoing professional learning for our teachers in the classroom. I'm a strong believer, yes, it's great to go to conferences and it's great to go see other districts. I'm a strong believer of what kind of professional learning can we bring in-house so that our teachers are seeing it inaction? Because we don't, we don't do better unless we know better.
Right.
We don't know what we don't know.
And I can't, can't agree more. To see it inaction, real time.
But, yes, there's always other districts that we can learn from.
Yeah, okay, all right.
So, we can certainly explore that.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, two comments. Presentation, I love the, a key, couple of key things that came up. Data to action, fabulous, and examples on how that's occurring. The conversation about culture as a foundation for learning and how that's occurring, what that is being done. Interesting discussion on chicken or the egg, behavior health versus success, what comes first? Not sure. But again, interesting discussion. Here's a question I have. When we were talking about PLCs and I heard of the principal groups, I heard, and maybe it's not a question, it's, here's the issue I'm trying to discern. PLCs of principals, heard, understand how K through five and pre-K perhaps through five can get together. Heard, understand how the middle school principals can get together. Challenge is, who do we have that are high school, where everyone comes together, our high school? Who do we have that that principal can get together and talk with and have ideas shared with back and forth? I know it's not a, this is a function of our unit school district. We only have one, one high school, but it would, I think it would be something to consider on a peer group, real or made up, that, that teacher could, that principal could share ideas and discuss things with.
Sure, I can, I can speak to that a little bit. Principal Deluga runs, actually, is really kind of heading up a consortium with AP programming and she does a lot of work with that. I think they meet on a monthly basis. And then we also try to rely a little bit more on CADCA, which is a local group of administrators. I wanted to just plug that because we, we'll lean on them a lot in terms of just support and resources. Even the, the portrait of a graduate example was something that we're already seeking more details from, from those different administrators across the district. But I think your, your point is well-taken and it's, it's a strong one and definitely something that we can, you know, keep the conversation going with.
But just one thing also, Margaret, I do want to let you know that while there are certainly opportunities we can be providing for the high school, we are trying to model the PLC process with every meeting that we run. So, when we have our first team meeting, Principal Deluga is there along with her team. When we have our 612 meetings, Principal Deluga is there with the middle school principals because we do want that vertical articulation between what's happening in the middle school to the high school. Just wanted to throw that out there. Did you have a question, Chris?
I just had a question about outcomes and how those tie into formal evaluations. So, concepts like if more of our kids learn at a higher level or if they don't, or if we make progress closing the achievement gap or we fail to do so, is that one of the metrics in the formal evaluations for principals and people in the learning and teaching apparatus that we've built?
30% of the principal evaluation is based on student growth. That's part of the law in Illinois. So, that is factored into their overall summative rating that they get. With the, there, there's no such law that applies to district office administrators, but they have a closed-ended tool based on their job description and they have a goal-setting process where they, those goals that they have are essentially tied to the presentation that Mary Ann just gave today. So, you know, we try to tie that together and, and they know their expectations. With their school improvement plan is support the learning and teaching priorities for the district, which is, on any given year, could be a couple of different things, but it's supposed to blend together so that it, it all kind of catalyzes each other, hopefully if, if we do it right.
Can I provide a specific example for that?
Sure.
So, one thing that we've put in place this year is that we're meeting with our directors bi-weekly to discuss the progress that they're making toward their goals because we don't want a goal set in October and then not talk about it again until January. So, for example, I just met with Dave Beatty today, science and math director. His two goals are tier-two interventions at the middle school is goal one and goal two is, now I'm having a brain freeze, oh, the science, implementation of the, the science pilot for whether we're going to choose amplify or the mindset. What's the other one called, Mary Ann? What is it? Yes, mystery science. So, he and I had a really long conversation, it was over an hour long today, about what steps he's taken toward his goals. He had, had seven different action steps that he was going to take and we talked about where he was at with each one. And that's where we discovered that he sort of, kind of let intervention fall off the plate because he's been doing many other things. So, now we've put it back on the plate to make sure that he addresses that between now and the next time that we meet. So, that's just one small example of, of your question.
So, if I'm a, I'm a coach in building A and our main goals are to have more of our students learn at a higher level and to close the achievement gap. And two years from now, I've either, the school's done phenomenally well or it didn't do that. So, does that factor in? I mean, I'm not advocating, obviously, for it being the only way, but I think part of the mix. It makes common sense that people coaching should have part of, you know, are more of our students learning better, would make common sense.
Sure. Our coaches are on the same evaluation plan that the teachers are, so they won't necessarily specifically be, you know, remain in coaching or not remain in coaching based off the school-wide data. But some things that we're putting in place are, like I spoke to earlier, the Common Coaching Log, which we didn't have before. We haven't been tracking the amount of time that coaches are spending in classrooms. So, the, the non-negotiable of 60 to 70% of time spent in classrooms, looking at that data, tracking that data, but then also, if they are in classrooms, what are they doing during that time? Because if they're in a classroom and being a resource gatherer, that's not impacting student outcomes. So, we need to get past being a resource provider and get to coaching cycles where they're modeling for the teacher or they're watching, the teacher's watching them or they're watching the teacher and providing feedback. And we're also moving towards something called student-centered coaching. So, when the coach is in the room, they're focusing on, and the teacher is focusing on, what is the data telling us? We've got these four kids that are, are or aren't doing this, what are we going to do about it? And that's what precipitates what that coaching cycle is going to look like. So, I do think that our coaches are going to be impacting our student outcomes.
But I think what I heard, basically, we're, we're putting metrics in place to track their presence in a classroom.
Presence and what they're doing and how they're spending their time.
And that's good. But if more of students don't learn better, that's not part of the evaluation for a coach, is that correct?
I wouldn't say, I wouldn't say that that's exactly correct. We've, we've, we've made changes in that program over the last couple of years. So, I mean, people's performance is monitored.
Okay.
Okay. Sad answer, sad answer.
For now, yeah. Well, I'll follow up. Not really, but.
Sounds good. All right. Anything else? All right. Thank you. Thank you. That was really well done. Okay, next is course proposals for 2020, 2021. Mr. Grins, back up.
So, this year, before we begin, I just wanted to give a quick little overview, a couple of key items. So, I've been here about three months, a little more. I have a few more gray hairs. That's a good thing. I'm aging gracefully. But in those, those three months, I really have been just absolutely impressed by the courses and the programs across the district. One of the most exciting things for me with this opportunity and this position was the fact that we have EC12 opportunities and we're really pushing ourselves to get into those classrooms and holding each other accountable. So, when I share some of these course proposals, I, I wanted to mention on sort of an alignment and piggyback to the concept of visiting, a lot of the work that we're doing, we're actually getting requests for people to come see us, specifically related to our work with PLTW. We have a team from a nearby district who've been really kind of pounding down the door to get in and to see what we're doing. So, I just wanted to sort of, you know, give ourselves a little pat on the back with the work that's taken place, not just with the PLTW program, but across the district because it's really been awesome to see these courses in action. So, that said, we have five courses for proposal tonight. How this works, to my understanding, is tonight is really just How this works, to my understanding, is tonight is really just a proposal and a feedback to, to gather your input and hear your ideas related to those. And then this is back on the docket for the October 22nd board meeting to be more formal. So I'm open to, to input questions. What I don't know, I'll, I'll do my best to get answers on and I'm, I'm, you know, encouraging that input as well. So of those five courses, two are in the middle school curriculum, related to the Project Lead the Way curriculum that I just talked about. Last year in 1819, we had design and modeling, as well as computer science for innovators and makers. As that progression continues, the two proposed for next year are automation and robotics, which if you haven't seen, is really, really an awesome program utilizing the VEX robotics. It's one of those courses that the students really get amped up and excited about when they hear about it and see it. They utilize coding as well as the development of robots with the coding. It's really stellar. And then our second one there is the green architecture. So that also uses some really neat software related to what's called Autodesk's 3D architectural design software. They are doing everything from sustainable building to looking at structures in applying science and math related to that. So those are the, the two with the middle school. I'm excited for those as well. And that'll sort of round us out with PLTW, just in the middle school specifically. In high school, we have three courses for proposal. One along our engineering pathway, that's also aligned to PLTW, and that's called POE or Principles of Engineering. This course has a prereq to it, which is Introduction to Engineer Design. So that's continuing along with our engineering pathway that has been in development. They're doing a phenomenal job navigating those courses, making them engaging, and really putting their passion into the work. It's been really neat to, to stop into those spaces if you haven't yet, to see those teachers as well. The second is Advanced Manufacturing Technology. This is part of our manufacturing pathway. We started last year with our Manufacturing Technology course. This course will continue on with that. They will actually be utilizing a lot of the hardware and the machines that we've been doing a really good job trying to allocate and utilize the grant funds to build out even more and more as we go. Again, that space, I can't say enough about it. It, it just really is neat to see what has transpired in even just my short time being here with those two dedicated teachers, as well as the staff and the work that Dr. Cohen did last year to really get that moving. So that course also has a prereq, and that's Introduction to Manufacturing Technology. So those are again, keeping on a robust pathway program with both the engineering track and then also with our manufacturing track as well. Not to jump ahead, but there are two courses related to each one of those pathways that would sort of round us out in the future. If those are to be approved, you know, just to sort of have a little bit of foresight as to where we're going, as well as where we came from. The last one I had some questions about earlier today, and I'm, I'm open to gathering more feedback on that, is the Mindful Leadership and Social Change. This is an interdisciplinary course. We had two courses with some declining enrollment. Those were in related fields, the social studies and English. This course is meant to, if it is proposed and, and approved, would be a replacement of those. And I asked for a little more detail on this course, and it intends to quote, "Explore the supported benefits of mindfulness and how developing these skills allows for sustainable leadership, greater problem-solving abilities, and an ability to remain present with members of a team whom one might be leading." Sounds like a possible book study for the PLCs. But I don't know if there's questions on that or any of the others along the way. But I did email some of those answers out as well before the meeting, just to kind of gather more information. But I'm, I'm more than willing to continue that work as well. Anything about the, the middle school or the high school related to PLTW for jumping into the others?
I'm excited to see the additional PLTW courses at the middle school. Is, does this mean that these are going to be, that there'll be two courses offered for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and the students will follow in that progression?
Yeah, go ahead, Mark. I'll let Mark speak to a little of the history there.
Yeah, this is the, this is the final year of implementation of it. Two years, well, last year, we started off, everybody, whether they were sixth, seventh, or eighth grade, all took design and modeling and computer science for innovators and makers because it was everybody's first year. And that DM course, design and modeling course, is designed to be the, sort of the launching point for all of the rest of the PLTW courses, the computers. And we have, we have the engineering strand represented in one semester, and then the computer science strand represented in the other with CSM. Going, the next course after that, we, we tried to stay in this logical progression. You can get a little bit more diverse into the engineering curriculum. There's some other things to choose. The green architecture, we felt like was the best fit based on what we currently have in terms of our wheel UA curriculum. The computer science strand at the middle school only has three courses, so one sixth, one seventh, one eighth.
Yeah, no, I agree with Courtney, the middle school courses sound like exciting opportunities for the kids, so it was good to see that. I thought the, the high school course, the description there seems pretty vague. And in a way where I think there, there needs to be probably so much additional definition put around what that course would actually be, that I'm not sure that that would be ready within a couple of weeks' time.
Okay.
At least from my perspective. I don't know how others feel.
Chris, this is, Project Lead the Way is a national curriculum. And it's, the engineering pathway is sequential. And so the, if you, if you go through the pathway and you get to the capstone course as a senior, many colleges will count that as an intro to engineering credit.
I'm sorry, I'm thinking of the, the other high school course.
He's on the mindfulness.
The mindfulness ship.
Okay, no, 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 I understand, I understand you have some concerns about that. So, so then if, so if, if you want us to address those or whatever, I, I'm sorry then. I, I just wanted to make sure you understood. Because you weren't here when we approved Project Lead the Way, so I wasn't sure if you, okay.
No objection to Project Lead the Way. I was talking about just the, the, I forget the name of the course, but it, which kind of reflects how I read the.
Yeah, I can.
It seemed like it could have been a course about most anything. And, and your, your email was fine, so I don't need any more comments. I, I just felt like that maybe wasn't ready for prime time. The other ones, I'm all supportive of. Thank you.
Yeah, I do feel like that, that your email, the theme of what makes a good leader kind of narrowed down the focus a lot more than the course description provided. So I think that helped kind of put some perspective into what is going to happen in this course. So, I mean, I thought that information was helpful.
Okay, thank you.
Margaret, do you have something?
And I know mindfulness is a relatively new field of study, and I know there are thousands of articles out there. So maybe if you could just provide some general information for the board on, on this field of study and what it means.
Sure.
Be helpful.
Yeah, I just personally felt like this is so broad and could go so many different ways. And I don't feel that, you know, I feel like it needs more parameters than I personally would like to see. I know you mentioned a couple of the resources that would be, you know, the, who, the proposal. But I personally would like to see pretty much all the resources that would be used in, in this course if it were to be, you know, considered.
I can work together more details and then, you know, propose and approve or deny. I think that, that's fair, absolutely.
You have something, sorry.
I just wanted to second what you were saying. I, I would want to, first of all, be able to take a look at the two texts that have been identified. But from your email, it sounds like there are more texts yet to be identified. I, I can't get behind that course before I saw those additional texts as well.
Sure.
It, it just needs to be more thought out before I can say yes to providing resources to develop a course like that. It's echoing everyone else. It's just too vague. I, I would like to see a course, by the way, I mean, we have on staff at York an expert in Shakespeare. But I don't believe we offer an English course in Shakespeare. I think we would have a lot of students that would be interested in that.
I also like Shakespeare.
Just saying.
Karen.
I'm really intrigued by the mindful leadership, as Margaret said, from the psychology perspective. It is relatively new. But I also see that there's a lot of overlap with the leadership from the business perspective. There's a lot of departments. So my take is not shelf it, but let's really be thoughtful about what we really want to do from a leadership standpoint. And what are we really wanting to do from a behavioral health, mindful leadership piece? So I would like something to be done maybe at some point. But I would like the high school to really be thoughtful, thoroughly thoughtful about something versus what we've seen. Which could be about anything, as Chris said. That's what I took it as, too.
Jim?
I mean, in, in the district's efforts to provide skills-based, moving away from content-based education, I think kids would be, our students would be well-served by a course in negotiation. There's, there's all sorts of, of skills-based curriculum that we could be introducing. Just, this course is just, just too nebulous for me.
I do have to add a plug for mindfulness, though. Because I think it does go along with our whole Thrive 205 concept. So we, we need to have that in there. Now, I don't know how or where it's placed, but we need to have, to be conscious of that. Thrive 205 doesn't just occur in middle school. It has to move forward and be a part of the high school curriculum also.
All right.
All right, thank you for the feedback. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. All right, Superintendent's Communication, Sandberg, eighth grade interdisciplinary unit, Elmhurst 2030.
So I'd like to go on record as saying that in my salad days, I read a lot of Shakespeare, too. Okay, so we had our last, we, we had our last innovation.
To be or not to be, that is the question.
So, so, so anyway, along this theme of it's getting late. I, we had our last meeting of the first cohort of the AASAN SPN. You've heard me talk about it before. We culminated the year's work with the rest of the districts that were in the program. And part of the, the agenda was people showed a video that kind of outlined the work that they had done throughout the year. And so I'm going to share that video with you. This primarily features eighth grade at Sandberg for the purposes of this video because some of the other interdisciplinary stuff at field, it was too early in the year to get much footage of that. But, but we do have 103 teachers that have signed up for the Innovation Learning Strand. So we feel like we're going to have a good plan, a plan to scale some of these interdisciplinary concepts and blended learning concepts into year two and three over the course of the next couple of years. So this is, this is eighth grade at Sandberg.
The vision for this program was to create a system and a schedule for kids. And student-centered vision where we can meet their needs and meet the kids where they are there with their learning and where they are with their emotional needs. So our system allows us to academically respond to students and emotionally respond to students and give them supports. I would say the biggest issues have been meeting our traditional content-based mindset and fitting it into a flexible schedule. Because we are basically trained to follow pacing guide and a curriculum map and all those things. And how do we take that pacing guide and curriculum map and outcomes and get it to fit into a flexible system? And that's where we get some, some programs or some content areas that are a little more rigid in how they're set up and how do we get around that? So it's a lot of paradigm clashes between traditional and future-focused learning.
Since I am the math teacher, it's really interesting to see how they're finding those statistics and including that stuff in their project that is not just, you know, specifically for math, but taking everything and it's kind of a whole child approach. It's been a really cool experience to see how they've gone from the beginning stage to where they are now. We're still having some bumps along the road, but our team is pretty solid and we're getting those things worked out day by day. And it's just been, it's been really interesting.
It's not perfect. We had an interesting little problem happen this week, and we had to react to it in a very positive way. We had a set of students that weren't quite happy with the group that they were in. And because this is all about collaboration and working through problems and communicating within a group, we used it as a great learning piece. And I think we got past it in a beautiful way. Because we want them to be ready for the next generation of their life. And they need to learn those world skills that they need to use later on.
The breakthrough that I'm noticing is the kids are responding really well. They're looking forward to this time. And the big breakthrough for me comes in the fact that there is no grade. It's not tied to a grade. And the kids are still working really hard and are really engaged in what they're doing.
I really like that we can be exploratory and doing things that we enjoy ourselves instead of being forced to do like a group, like exactly what the teacher wants us to do. We're allowed to focus on things that we actually really care about.
I really like the innovation projects because I think it's a lot of fun. It really pushes you to be like creative and come up with new ideas and work with your group.
It's made me a better teacher. I'm spending much more time with individual kids and groups, learning from them, providing them feedback immediately. It's helping me as a teacher because we collaborate on a daily basis. It's about a very focused idea, and then we go and implement it pretty much the next period. With this overall plan, but we kind of tweak things as we go along. That's what I'm enjoying about it a lot.
It's important because this really truly allows us to be a responsive classroom and a responsive curriculum deliverer. And it's not just academics. There are a lot of things our students deal with, behavior-wise, social, emotional-wise. And we're now putting together a system that allows us to teach them about their curriculum, but also teach them how to be better people.
So city manager Grabowski hosted them at City Hall a week or so ago. And, and they talked with them about some of the problem-solving types of things that they had to do. You saw, I think you might have seen their theme is Elmhurst 2030. So they have to try to identify a potential problem in the community and try to solve it. And it's really fun when you go in that classroom. I, I actually recommend you do that sometime and, and see what they're doing. It's pretty cool. So after they had their meeting over at City Hall, they came over here for lunch. So we showed them their video. And we had the volume on the wall turned all the way up. We had the volume on the computer turned all the way up, and we had the YouTube volume turned all the way up. And the second they saw themselves on the screen, it was, it was chaos and you couldn't hear a word. So they, they had a blast seeing themselves, but it's, it's going well. So, so that's it for my report.
Jim?
Can I add something as the board member that was invited to participate? I was very enthusiastic to participate. One, to get a closer look at, at what was going on. But two, also as a board member, I mean, this, this involves, this whole innovation project involves quite a bit of investment that's kind of non-traditional school, district investment. Transporting people four times, you know, to a different city to go to these seminars to learn what experts have to say about this. And so I was, I was very interested in, is it worth the investment? And I have to say, after a year, after seeing small parts of a final project, of a final project, I have to say a resounding yes, it is. And one of the things that our administration wisely did was anticipate the next step and developed this innovation strand in this year's professional learning. As Dave pointed out, 103 teachers, is that right, or 180? Whatever, 103 teachers have signed up for that innovation strand. So clearly, they're seeing what's going on. They've got their own idea how to put their own twist on this. And I frankly think we're on to something big. All those kids were, are firmly engaged in their day-to-day learning, as you can see from that video. And now we have 103 teachers that want to not only replicate it, but, but more importantly, improve on what they see and do it their way and become even more engaged.
And do it their way and become even more engaged in their students' learning. So I, I truly think we're on to something big here, and, and I resoundingly say it is worth the investment we've made. I mean, clearly, you know, it was a first time for AASA. It was a first time for us. There's stuff you can do better, sure. But they're doing it again, and every time, they'll get better. So.
Thanks. All right, anything else? All right. Tweet of the week.
Tweet of the week, this week goes to, and before I start on that, we did challenge all of our principals to dive in to their Twitter accounts and to really start chronicling what happens in their buildings along their journey. And we spent a lot of time tonight talking about culture. The principal's life is incredibly busy. Just getting down to the best part of the week, making those kid connections can oftentimes be very tough. But this week, just want to shout out a bright example from Dr. Christina Prodraza over at Jefferson. She's putting her imprint on the school culture there and empowering our little ones to make sure that they feel great about the culture in which they belong. And she says the absolute best part of her week is hashtag positive phone calls home. Hashtag ignite D205, hashtag unlimited growth and connection. I come from an era, if you visited the principal's office, that must mean you've done something incorrect. However, this is the reverse trend. Congratulations to what's going on at Jefferson and to all of our principals for really embracing our challenge to be on Twitter and hashtag ignite D205.
Thank you. All right. Any board communications?
So I just, because it came up a bunch of times, I want to speak to the Committee of the Whole, which is coming up. If you don't remember that I do this, you know, during the meetings, keep track of things people ask for, things they want to know, and then try to work them into the agenda along the way. And one of the things at our retreat, we agreed to is that instead of having a learning and teaching committee, we are going to do Committee of the Whole, where we could really dig into some of the things we wanted to make sure we had a discussion on, they were at the beginning stages, a little more around academics and curriculum. So we have our first one coming up on November 12th. And Dave and I just talked Monday, and basically, you all confirmed that what we thought was right. You know, we'll talk about Thrive D205, some assessment homework, some of the ranking conversation, and also Portrait of a Graduate. So all of it kind of interwoven. It is going to be a work session. We're going to sit, not like this. It's going to be a true working session. They're planning some activities for us. You're going to get a pre-committee work packet to look through. So just kind of a heads up on that, so you know that that's coming. And that'll, you know, then we'll see how that structure works. It starts at six o'clock that, oh, it's on here wrong. We're planning on six, and we're going to go till nine, at least, so. Come on, it's already, yeah. Yeah. Okay. So just wanted to give you a heads up on that. All right. So upcoming meetings, we have Tuesday, October 22nd, 2019, Board of Ed, regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting at 7:00, District 205 Center. And Tuesday, November 12th, 2019, Board of Education meeting. That time will be changing to 6:00. So other than that, if there's something else, we're adjourned.